Mrs. Smalling.
President, I'm taken by God.
Mr. Simeon.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein.
Here with coffee.
Mrs. Aijak.
Here.
Mrs. Goldenberg.
Here with water.
Mr. Michler.
Here. First order of business is approval of the minutes of the following meetings. November eighteenth, Executive Session and Regular Meeting. Can I have such a motion? Yes, sir.
Yes.
Any questions, comments, changes, amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, it's on. Just to bring you Superintendent's one minute. I will appeal to Mrs. Goldenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Rinn. I would just like to mention to everyone that we have three Board of Education members who are retiring from their services. And this is their final Board of Education Public Meeting tonight. I had asked that you give me a few minutes so I can tell you about their contributions to our Educational Committee and our community. We'll start with Mr. Lee Powell. He has served the least amount of time compared to the three of them. He's served one term for three years. He has been on the Technology Committee, the Budget and Finance Committee, the Revenue Generation Committee, as well as he served for the Off-Board Committee of Moore Arts. His contributions to the technology focus and technological improvements within our district are amazing. He has been the Chairman of Technology. He has also been the Chairman of a new committee that started less than half a year ago, Revenue Generation. And he's jump-started both of these efforts with more enthusiasm and clarity than I have ever seen from any Board of Education member. Lee's insight to get to the heart of a matter and guide the discussion appropriately has been incredible. Lee and his contributions will be greatly missed. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to talk about Ms. Christina Sajak. She's been on the Board of Education for ten years. She was kind enough to come in when someone had to leave their position, and then she was willing and wonderfully served three additional terms. She has been on several committees: Curriculum, Operations and Facilities, Policy Committee. She's served on off-board committees as well, such as PACE, SPEAK, the Calendar Committee, and I'm probably not mentioning all of them, but she has been the Chairperson for Curriculum Committee, she's been the Chairperson for Policy Committee. She's also served on Leadership for our Board of Education, and she has served as our Vice President and served very well. She has an amazing ability to bring attention to detail, which surpasses all other Board members. Her care and her passion for this district has helped guide all of the Board members. Her leadership and her wealth of knowledge will be greatly missed by every one of us. Thank you, Chris, very, very much. And last but not least, Mr. Don Michler. This gentleman to my left is one who has overseen our public school system by volunteering continually and been elected and re-elected by our township for over eight consecutive terms. He has now served on our local school board for a quarter of a century, twenty-five years. Our Board of Education members are not compensated in any manner. Don's dedication deserves very special recognition. He has served on Budget and Finance and chaired it. He has served on Operations and Facilities and chaired it. And Leadership, just to name a few of the committees. He has been intricately involved in all of the decisions needed in educating everyone from our kindergarteners to our high school seniors. Our Moorestown School System is admired throughout the state, as well as being regarded as one of the top districts in the Burlington County. Moorestown Township Public Schools have consistently delivered a phenomenal education throughout Mr. Michler's tenure. Don's caring manner, always putting the children first in every decision I've seen him make, speaks to his character. Our Board of Education records go back to nineteen-hundred-and-ten. According to these records, Mr. Michler has now served on the Board of Education longer than any person to date. He began his service in nineteen-ninety, served as Vice President starting in nineteen-ninety-five, and has been the Board President since two-thousand-and-five. May I please ask for a show of appreciation and applause for all three members of their service? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goldenberg. My report this evening starts on behalf of the Staff Administration here at TPS. I certainly want to thank Lee, Chris, and Don for their service. Although I've been here since only February of this year, I have a lot to be thankful for, and my working with you is a great experience, and I thank you for your help of bringing me here. I thank you for that, and I wish you well in your days after the Board. I have some pretty good news here tonight. I went to our Superintendent Luncheon today in Burlington County and was called aside by the County Executive, and there were about six or seven districts that had some news for us, and I asked Lynn Sugars to share that good news with the public tonight.
What Tim learned today is that we will not have to go through our tri-annual monitoring process known as CUSAC this year. We go through this process every three years. It is a very daunting process in terms of information gathering, binders and binders and binders of information that we have to gather and have at the fingertips of the monitors that come in from the county office. Because we are a high-performing district, we have been excused from that during this tri-annual period. It'll go to a six-year cycle as opposed to a three-year cycle, so we were very pleased to hear that today because of the amount of work and pressure and information gathering that it entails becomes very consuming while we're in that process. So we were very pleased to learn that while with a few other districts in Burlington County, we will not have to go through that process this year.
Thank you, Mrs. My student highlights tonight had the pleasure of being at last week's winter choral concert at the high school. The talent from the Magicals, the concert choir and select chorus was outstanding, and I want to acknowledge the work that those students do and certainly our new choral teacher over there, Sergey, who's doing an outstanding job in that program. Overwhelmingly successful concert last week at the high school, and then forward to the instrumental concert next week. I also want to congratulate all of our sports teams, our full sports teams, and all of the individual and team recognitions, including our Coaches of the Year, and a great season for all of our student athletes. And I want to wish all of you a very happy holiday and the best for two thousand and fifteen. Thank you. We'll move to Board of Committee Reports, Policy and Governance. Mr. Long.
Mr. Michler, due to a snafu, did not have a policy briefing, unfortunately missed most of the calendars, so.
Okay, we'll move again next month. We'll come back here when we get to the policies that are up for adoption. Curriculum Committee. Mr. Simeon.
Thank you, Mr. Michler. The Curriculum Committee met yesterday, Monday, December eighth, and the entire meeting, except for one book approval at the end, was devoted to a discussion of the upcoming annual report, which we will present in our January Public Meeting. In that January Public Meeting, we will go through significant, and in particular, Ms. Carol Butler will go through, significant detail on the performance of our district by grade level, by classes they move through the grade levels, and by different subsegments and populations within the grade levels and classes as they move through the district. We've also, in that meeting yesterday, discussed the significant changes in the state testing program. And in the past, we've used NJAS, in the future, we'll be using PARC and other measures to measure student performance, and we're trying to come up with strong measures and strong ways to relate the old data to the new data. Lastly, in that discussion in January and in the presentation in January, we will look at multi-year information on our AP testing, on our SAT and PSAT scoring, and also the post-graduation outcomes for our students. So this information will be discussed again on our December nineteenth Curriculum Meeting, and as I mentioned previously, we'll have a public presentation of that information on January twenty-second? Twenty? On the January twentieth meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Simeon? Mrs. Goldenberg, the Operations and Facilities Committee.
Thank you. The Operations and Facilities Committee met on November twentieth and reviewed proposals that were received in response to the district's request for proposal for both construction managers and site engineers. The district received seven construction management proposals, as well as seven site engineer proposals. After the references were checked, four firms of each type were selected to interview. The committee discussed and narrowed down dates for this to occur. Subsequently, the committee spent two evenings interviewing all eight different firms to provide the services. Our recommendation of the New Road Construction Management Firm and the Edwards Engineering Group are on the agenda this evening for approval. We also discussed a request for the use of high school stadium track for a Relay of Life event, which will take place at the Moorestown High School track towards the end of the school year. The district has been asked to host the event, but due to the close proximity of homes within our area, and we wanted to be very considerate of our neighbors, the decision was made to agree to this event only if the music would be turned off by ten p.m. and the event would end by midnight. We also approved the installation of a donated lacrosse wall. It will be located on Bridge Borough Field, and it will not interfere with the renovations to take place. Any questions? Thank you. Yes. Our Budget and Finance Committee met on November twenty-fourth, and Mr. Mike Holt and David McNally of Holman Brina Allison came to review the thirteen-fourteen Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and had our corresponding audit. Mrs. Sugars will review the audit with all of us this evening. The committee requested that they put together a new study, which should be prepared and give back to us, that tells us how the state funding would affect Moorestown schools if the State School Funding Reform Act were funded. We also met with our middle school principal, Mr. Key, and we discussed a new stipend related to the Middle School Musical. He proposed that an hourly rate be determined, and the time needed for this would vary from year to year. He estimates twenty hours will be needed this year for the musical. Our next O and F meeting is scheduled for Mon... I'm sorry. Our next B and F meeting is scheduled for Monday, December twenty-second. Any questions? Thank you.
Technology Committee. Mr. Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Michler. Number of items. Number of items were discussed at the meeting on December, on the actual meeting was November the nineteenth. So the first was smart board installation implementation. It's an ongoing discussion. We talked about the availability of smart board content once in outside of the classroom as part of a wider objective applicable to all classroom content in general, and hopefully some beyond that. To capture a smart board data was also discussed to provide the district with metrics that we might prove useful in the future for making decisions on the use of technology, how it would expand the use in different directions affecting the district, et cetera. One-to-one pilots were also discussed. We looked at some survey results related to the pilot of the middle and high schools. They were generally favorable, lots of suggestions for improvement that obviously the administration Jeff's team were going through, including adding smart board viewer software to all the one-to-one programs that are currently in circulation, as well as potentially making that available for other devices. The learnings from a recent field trip, which included a number of teachers and administrators of the district that had employed the one-to-one model for a number of years, is also reviewed based on the feedback from that visit. I'm pretty confident that the approach we're taking, where we're piloting learning, experimenting, rethinking, and essentially recasting what we want to do in the future is the right approach. I think that would serve us very well as we move forward and ingrain technology more closely curriculum and vice versa throughout the district. We looked at Google Apps, continued use, it continues to expand in terms of adoption and usage throughout the district. More than twenty-three-hundred active users, one-hundred-and-thirty-plus score documents are currently in the system, and additional training in the interim has also been delivered to teachers on several dates as the applications continue to increase in usage. We talked about PARC readiness, and this is one we've pointed out a couple of times over the past few Board meetings. Very important, obviously, that we execute this properly. There'll be more than six-hundred students taking the PARC assessment simultaneously in March through the UES, in particular in some of the elementary schools. A number of those devices that are going to be used will be offline, connected wirelessly. So Jeff and his team are obviously on high alert for this. They're going to do a lot of testing and final planning to make sure that this comes off properly. That's obviously going to have big effects on our ability to deliver on the PARC testing appropriately. We've also asked the administration to ensure that in addition to teacher training, all students in the district have some exposure to PARC and the way in which the test has been constructed and will be deployed. And then finally, we talked about a revision or extension of the three-year technology plan. With a little bit more than a year left on the original three-year plan, and our representatives from the administration and our teaching community are expected to meet in December, if they haven't already, with the goal of refining or extending the current technology plan through the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeenth school year, and the exercise hopefully should be completed by the beginning of the year. Obviously, we think this is important for a lot of different reasons, but we've learned a lot over the past year and a half or so. I think we've got a great team in place in order to execute that plan. And as long as we know where we're going, obviously, then when the time comes to defend certain things that we like to do in the district from a technology perspective, then we have something solid in place that we point to and say, that's why we're doing this. I think it helps the overall communication of why we're making certain investments throughout the district. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, the Revenue Generation Committee.
No update, it actually occurred before the last board meeting. We'll be meeting again a week from tomorrow.
And Mr. Simeon, the Township Rec Advisory Committee.
The Rec Advisory, thank you, Mr. Michler. The Rec Advisory Committee met last evening. I wasn't able to attend because I was out on business, but I will report on that meeting in our K through eight meeting.
Okay. And speak, Mrs. Aijak.
Thank you, Mr. Michler. There's been no meeting since our last meeting, but the upcoming meeting is this Thursday at nine-thirty at the Star Center.
Thank you. Moore Arts.
Thank you. In spite of the rain, the Moore Arts Holiday Arts Festival this past Saturday, December sixth, was a success. A number of student vocal and instrumental performances in a K through twelve student art exhibit. Moore Arts would like to thank everyone who supported the Holiday Arts Festival, as well as the district art teacher for sharing the great student artwork throughout the district. Moore Arts will also be hosting an evening of music and fine arts at the Cubity House on Saturday, January twenty-fourth, from seven-thirty to ten-thirty. The evening will include cabaret-style performances by entertainers and accomplished faculty, as well as a professional art exhibit with select A to P level student artwork. Moore Motion will be held on Friday, January the sixteenth, at the Moorestown Church Street Rec Center on the thirty-fourth, from six-thirty to nine. Moore Motion is a family event focused on children's in grades K through six, and as always, for more information, please visit the website.
Ladies, Mr. Sallinger.
Thank you, Mr. Michler. PACE meets on Thursday at one o'clock this month in the Star Center, so I have nothing to report today, but I will let you know next morning.
Mrs. Goldenberg, how many schools this year?
I do not have anything to report from the Hennings School this year.
But you might have something from the Garden State Coalition Schools?
I do, at the Garden State Coalition Schools. Actually, I'm teasing. Tomorrow is the meeting for Garden State Coalition Schools in East Brunswick at three-thirty, and we've got notification that they canceled the last meeting in November, so nothing to report new next month.
Thank you. In our presentation section tonight, Mr. Sugars is going to talk about the financial audit, which will.
So tonight on our agenda is approval of our annual audit. We do it each year about this time each year, and the audits are actually due to the state December fifth. And so you, as Board members, have copies of the actual audits. The public has copies of what we call the synopsis of the audit, which we have to provide each year, and I'm just going to go over that synopsis very quickly. The actual audit itself is a pretty large document, and it's broken down into a couple different parts. First part is the government-wide statements, and they're pretty big numbers and a little bit confusing. The second part, the B section, is the fund statements, and that's actually what is reflected in the synopsis. A little bit easier to understand, kind of breaks it down to our main categories: General Fund, Special Revenue Fund, and Debt Service Fund. Next year, we'll have Capital Project Fund on there as well. And then the rest of the audit, there's a lot of statistical information in there in the back that some people find interesting. There's information on our Food Service Fund, which is more like a business and runs more like a business. Do sheary funds, and also our auditor's opinion. We received an unmodified opinion this year, which is the highest opinion that you can get. So let's start with our balance sheet. The audit synopsis has two pages. The first page is the balance sheet, the second page is revenue and expenditures. So as you can see with our balance sheet, we have some cash, we have some receivables that we'll be receiving from other governments, and again, we're broken down here to the General Fund, Special Revenue Fund, the Debt Service Fund, and we have a comparison of what our totals look like at the end of this fiscal year, June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, versus what it looked like the year before. You can see we did have a drop in the cash area. We have corresponding drops in the liability and fund, where we ended our year, this year in terms of assets. Liabilities, accounts payables, intergovernmental accounts payable, meaning we have some receivables that we receive from other governmental agencies, our inter-fund payables, which are monies that are due in between our funds, deferred revenues, any revenue we received but did not earn yet, and so again, we have a drop. If you look, the biggest drop here is in our accounts payable numbers from last year to this year. Fund balances. We're always very interested in what our fund balance looks like because it has such an impact on our budget. So when we look at our fund balances for the end of this fiscal year, our capital reserve account is about the same. We have about a hundred thousand dollars left in that account. We have used some of those funds in previous years for some capital projects that we did, unrelated to the rather large projects that we're going to begin in the coming weeks. Excess surplus. Excess surplus in the current year needs to be used in the following fiscal year. So what you want to note here is the fact that we're ending our fiscal year at nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars. We ended it last year at four-hundred-and-six thousand dollars. So the fact that that number is higher is good because that means as we're beginning our budgeting process, we're starting out with a good number there. Now, what is excess surplus? Excess surplus is anything that's more than two percent of the prior year expenditures. So if you look down further, you see that General Fund number there? That is our General Fund balance that we can have on hand. That's the maximum amount that we can have on hand, and that went from one-point-five the previous year to one-point-three this year. We can't have any more than that on hand, which is a little scary when you think about it because that's not quite a payroll for us. But that's the most fund balance that we can have on hand, and anything else that goes above that number is considered excess and has to be used in the subsequent year's budget. So let's look at our budgeted fund balance, what we've used in our budget over the past couple of years. So you can see that there's been some real fluctuations there, and if you recall, going into our budgeting process last year, we were dealing with a deficit in that area because we had gone from two-point-five million that we had used the year before to just below a million in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. And so we had to make up those funds in our budget as well as accommodate increased costs. So the good news is, the minimum amount that we can budget for this year is nine-ninety-eight. So going into the budget this year, we're at about the level that we used last year, and that's a good thing for us. And hopefully, we can sustain a more even use of our fund balance in the future. So let's look at the other side, our revenues and expenditures. Look at our different revenue categories, and this is very broad categories so that they fit up here on this PowerPoint. If you look at your C statement, C1 statement, you'll see a much more detailed breakdown of what's in those numbers. So our primary, largest revenue source is our tax funding, and you can see that between the two years, it went up slightly. Tuition increased dramatically as we have been bringing in more out-of-district students into our programs. Also, our expanded day kindergarten program affected that number as well. Our miscellaneous is a lot of different things, like facility rentals, interest earnings, kind of anything else that doesn't fall into some of those other categories. Our state sources are the funds that we receive from the state. In the first category, that would be categorical state aid for the General Fund. In the Special Revenue Fund, that would be grant funding. Most of that is non-public funding. And in the Debt Service Fund, that would be state aid that we receive towards the payment of our debt. Federal sources would be in the General Fund, CENON reimbursements from the federal government, and in the Special Revenue Fund, it would be grant funding, like NCLB funding or IDEA funding. You can see we had a drop there as well. Overall, though, when you look at our revenues, we're down about a hundred thousand dollars from where we were the year before. Expenditures, and again, these are very broad categories, just so that we can fit it in a spreadsheet here. That C1 statement, again, in your audit, gives you a budget line breakdown of what all these categories. categories are. So instruction, regular instruction, special ed instruction, and other instruction made up what we call our direct instruction costs, things that can be attributed to a particular grade level or a particular classification, and they are primarily salaries and supplies and textbooks and things of that nature, and that is in the first three categories here. Student support services would be anything that supports the classroom, your guidance office, your nurses' office, your media center, administration, all of those things fall into the student support services category. Maintenance and transportation, employee benefits. Special schools is our summer enrichment program, and capital outlay is anything that we purchase through our capital outlay budget. That could be small projects, that could be equipment, capital stake purchases as well. Principal and interest comes out of our debt service fund, that's the principal and interest on our bonds, previous bonds, and you can see there that we did have a corresponding increase in that of almost a little bit over $100,000 as well between the 2012-13 school year and the 2013-14 school year. So then we have to look and see what our net change in our fund balance is, and that's how we wind up with those fund balance numbers that we talked about back here. You'll see these fund balance numbers. Fund balance numbers that you see here at the bottom there, those total fund balance numbers, we're going to show how we got to those numbers. So we take our revenues and our expenditures, and we compare those to each other, and we came out with, we spent 2.7 more. We had 2.7 more in expenditures than we did in revenues. We had some other financing sources, which would be our capital leases that offset some of that, and then we have transferred to charter school. We actually did have a charter school student this year that went to a school in Camden, so we had to make a payment toward the cost of that. And so our net change in fund balance is the sum rate of all of those numbers, and that was for this year, $1.2 million. Start out with our July one fund balance of $4.7 million. Deduct the 1.2 change in our fund balance, and that's how we come back to that $3.4 million change in fund balance. Down from the year before, as you can see, but still, we're still doing very well. We had one comment in the audit. The comment was about the food service fund. You are only allowed to have an average of three months expenditures in your food service reserves. We were about $30,000 over that amount, and therefore we had to develop what we call a corrective action plan to address that. That corrective action plan is to offset some of our cafeteria expenses such as cafeteria aids or equipment, and we're developing that plan right now to use up some of those funds so that we can get those back. Is there any questions about that or about the audit in general?
That wasn't considered material finding, though, was it?
It was not.
Is our website powered?
Powerfully is not yet, but we always post our audit on the website, so after tonight, after it's been accepted, we'll make sure that we get it up there. Any other questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you, and I have to give a lot of the credit to Joanne D'Angelo, Becky Thompson, Carol Mark, Mary Lou Doyle, all the people in the business office who keep this going on a daily basis.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out this evening. If you would like to address your board, I have to ask that you raise your hand, and when I recognize you, come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and speak with us on whatever options you'd like to, there are some rules, but there are a few of the guest man questions.
I have 725 minutes standing. And I'd also add my thanks to the group, John and Lee Powell, for your contribution over the years, obviously. Chris, you've been working as a speaker for a couple of years, and we very much appreciate it. We have had phenomenal support from the board for many, many years of speaking, and what we're unaware of is going forward, if there's something that we can do to ensure we have a good team going forward to work with us, substitute for new people coming on board, some people being here for a while, everybody's involved in a whole bunch of things, so I know it'll be a spare time, but is it helpful if we approach the board about what we think we can fit, or is, do you guys volunteer for the committees, or how does it work?
Well, like I say, in the past, it's worked both ways. Sometimes people volunteer, sometimes people are recruited because of the skills they have or the max they have with the other people on the committee, and I think the board would welcome your input about the kinds of talents or skills or personality that you think works best with your group, and I'm sure the board would take that into consideration when they make their decision about who to assign as the representative.
Well, maybe I'm correct, so we'll talk about it all. But I asked this from the president, and just to make sure I wanted to thank you a couple of years back. You challenged me to come forward meetings. You may not realize the challenge until that point because I was stepping on you.
Sorry.
No, so thank you. I want to thank you for doing that. I've enjoyed coming for the last couple of years, and I think I've benefited a lot from it. But to that end, one of the things I talk about a lot is communication with community. I know you all talk to your neighbors and your friends and your colleagues at church, but I really would love to see more people here, maybe wouldn't know how that works, but I think the community could really benefit from having more people here, and as we said in the new year, I would be getting my passion to think about how we can get more people here, get more people involved, so that hopefully we can give you as many good ideas as we can share the facts that the board is working with instead of the road we're stuck with all that for three years. So it's up to us to be here, but it's hard to get to there.
I don't think there's ever been an attempt to discourage people from coming.
No, no.
So if you ask my ideas to encourage them, we used to have a lot larger audiences of people just interested in some things that were going on, not necessarily here to talk about some of your subjects, so if you ask my ideas, you know, just happen to focus these. Might have to be more cookies, but...
There you go. But thank you all for your...
Well, thank you.
Just say be careful what you ask for, Don, but you're not going to be here, so it doesn't matter. Do you want more people at these meetings? Be careful who's wishing for the rest of you who were saying.
That's good.
That was a little nebety to start with. Lady, you said the $30,000 that was in excess could be used for cafeteria, is that to pay for cafeteria aids?
Essentially, what we would do is we would reimburse the general fund for those expenses.
Okay, so if you had that money extra, then that would free up the cafeteria aids that come from the general funds, correct?
Yes.
Which would allow for, or allow for excess money or for additional aids were needed?
Correct, if that, yes, if there was anything we could. You want to be careful because you don't know that you're always going to have that as a source.
Right.
To the general fund, so I hate to rely on it too much. That's why I prefer to do equipment purchases over salaries, but certainly we could offset some of those costs this year.
Okay, I mean, because that's, I mean, that's a lot there. Is there an addendum to the agenda tonight?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. And the full, complete budget, the audit, is that going up?
Yes, that'll be on the website. We'll put it up...
Not your synopsis, the whole thing?
The whole thing. You can always put our audit up, so yes, we will add this one as well.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just real quick, I just wanted to thank Kathy Goldenberg and the Schubert's for coming out to the Grohl County School Board Association last Thursday. It may have been repetitive for both of you, since you both attended the workshop in Lake City, a lot of the people that are adding, so it's new knowledge for them, but just ask the rest of the board to be aware of it. I'll fill you with the exact locations next month, but we will have a security report released in January, which would be in West Hampton. Association had past tours. They released the report once, but they're doing a series of third regional meetings. One fortunately is going to be in Grohl County, the other two will be in New Jersey, and then our next meeting for the association will be first Thursday in February in Madison. And we have a pretty special agenda lined up for that, not to mention it's always phenomenal food there, so I'd prefer to come after that. And any administrators, you're more than welcome. Thank you.
Let's turn to the reports from the board secretary and the district secretary.
I request approval for the financial reports of the board secretary from October, the trends report for the month of September, cafeteria report for the month of November, and the resolution of board educations on place certification and budgetary major account fund status.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
I recommend the approval of the budget transfers for the month of November 2014 attached as Exhibit 15-169.
Second. Questions? All in favor?
I recommend approval of the bills in the amount of $7,261,232.71 attached as Exhibit 15-170.
Second. Are there any extensions to this?
There's none.
And any questions? All in favor of approving the bills?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, no recommendations?
Policies and procedures. Tonight we have three policies on second reading. I recommend that the board adopt on the second reading the file codes for policy 2468, policy 5300, policy 5339 as Exhibit 15-179.
Someone?
Second.
Questions? Mr. Weisen, would you like to say anything about these policies or talk about them?
We did talk about them last night, it's been very, very brief. These three policies are on my list. One policy is required by the state to be adopted within our policy manual very quickly. Independent education evaluations is a policy that's going to be in place if adopted that will address the need for attainment as it goes forward. When an individual comes to us requesting an individual education evaluation, that's set with the policy guidelines for how that's going to be approached. Use of AED, that's requirement for screen for books, may tell people how to use an electronic computer. It's always a good thing to have around. And then screening for dyslexia is again required by current statute, requires us to screen all students for dyslexia requested.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on the educational program, I recommend that the board approve the student on Exhibit 15-172 for the 2014-15 school year at Burlington County Alternative High School at prevailing tuition rate not to exceed state maximum rate with transportation provided.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
The special education in district placement, I recommend that the board approve the special education student listed on Exhibit 15-17, grade, for placement in the Moorestown Township Special Education Program for the 2014-15 school year at the appropriate rate of tuition with transportation provided by the sending district.
Second.
Questions?
Mr. Wilson, how full is this class at this point?
Mr. Weisen, we still have available spaces in this classroom? It's not full yet.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Special education services contract, I recommend the board approve the agreements attached as Exhibit 15-174 will bankrupt to provide special education services during the 14-15 school year.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay.
I recommend the board approve the travel expenditure request attached as Exhibit 15-175.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
I recommend the board accept the following donation, the Sallstrom Astro Master Series telescope from Mrs. Sarah Specter to be used by the science teachers at the upper elementary school.
Second.
I have one question. Is it assembled? So I've got one something I guess, why, why, how to assemble it? Is there a wall run donations? You mentioned a donation on the wall, is that not supposed to be on here on the cross wall?
Yes, it's supposed to technically should be. We'll add that to the next agenda.
Okay, okay. Okay, any other questions about the telescope? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Someone will send over a letter of thank you?
Student settlement agreements resolved by the Moorestown Board of Education to adopt and approve the settlement agreement between student and Moorestown Township Board of Education attached as Exhibit 15-176.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Another student settlement agreement, I recommend the board approve following resolution that the board of education adopt and approve the student settlement agreement between student and Mooretown Township Education attached as Exhibit 15-177.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
2013-14 financial audit, I recommend the board approve the 2013-14 financial audit and the corresponding corrective action.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Construction manager appointment, I recommend the board approve new road construction management as construction manager for the upcoming requirement projects.
Second. Questions? This carries the recognition of a group of people who interviewed the four candidates of the church to be interviewed, and some subsequent conversations to do with. There's one thing I want to point out, in their contract, they have a price per month for the construction period, then they have a price per month for the post-construction period, and it's real critical that we manage the, because these are discrete projects, that we manage those projects during the construction period so we can relate that seven months of what's normally closed out when you do one big project. This isn't one big project, it's a series of smaller projects, and if they close them out during the months of the construction, you won't have to pay to have them closed yet. That's another big savings that we haven't really calculated. In any case, new road carries the recognition of the people who's Kathy, Matt, Brandon, myself, Lynn, Tim, and Mr. Garrison was there, and there were others that were similar in capability, perhaps more expensive, and then there were some that were a lot more expensive, and there were some that weren't qualified at all. We were impressed with their presentation, and they have, part of their staff is people that had done construction management for us several times before, and we're very comfortable with them, and they know our routine, including how to include the staff... with them, and they know our routine, including how to include the staff, they know how to do that, and so I think the group of us was very comfortable with that recommendation.
Who's the principal contact we're going to have?
Well, yeah, no. And he, while their model would say he might work on five contracts at a time, he's only going to, he may only be working on two if they're the successful bidder in Simmons, but it's a similar sized project, so, but it would be close, you know, close proximity, so it will have his attention no doubt.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Those?
Site engineer appointment, I recommend that the board approve Edwards Engineering Group as site engineer for the district for the upcoming referendum projects.
So moved.
Second.
Again, the same group of people, Mr. Simeon, Mrs. Goldenberg, Mr. Q, myself, Lynn, and Superintendent Ray, interviewed four firms, pretty much the same makeup, somebody that's too high price, somebody that we don't think's qualified, and two that we thought were pretty good. In an interesting turn of events, we, well, let me just back up and say, what we're looking for is design services for the stadium to track, and engineering for that, which is, there's a lot of water management issues there, and then engineering for a number of other discrete projects like the parking lots we said we're going to fix, et cetera. And so with the stadium being the bulk of the money of that, we were very keen on finding somebody that had experience in that field, and there were several that had quite a bit of experience in that field. We were also very keen on finding somebody that had, sounded like they had solutions to the South Valley stormwater, whatever water, there's just a lot of water, groundwater, stormwater issues, and as we were interviewing, we realized that there was a geotechnic expert that...
Geotechnical engineer?
Yeah, that was part of a team of a consulting company, that we thought had a really good handle on the South Valley issue, and then there was Edwards, who we thought we had a really good handle on the parking lots in the field, and the artificial turf, et cetera, having just finished a project at the break of this valley, and at other schools. There was also another firm that we thought highly of, that was, their pitch was primarily related to the stadium, and their experience was primarily with major universities, private colleges, at, at, sort of at a different level than we're at. So we, I know Mrs. Sugar's had some conversations with them, these firms after the, after the meeting, and after we agreed, not necessarily unanimously, but we agreed on which firm we were most interested in, to try and put together the geotechnical engineer from over here, or the design engineer from over there, and I believe we have an arrangement that's satisfactory, that'll be led by Edwards Engineering, and also a satisfactory price. So, questions?
Ms. Michelle, so Edwards is going to oversee the rest of the engineering, they're going to be the engineer right at the start, correct? And, you know, how many projects? Do you know how many projects they're working on currently? Do you mean, kind of admin, like, to the ground work?
I know that, we did question them about, you know, the timing of this project, and would it fit into their current workload, and they were sort of in between the projects, and this one sort of fit in there very well.
They do, they do mostly schoolwork, or they do mostly schoolwork, you know, but the majority of work is?
They do a tremendous amount of schoolwork, I'm not sure what they're doing.
That's not all, they do.
Other questions?
How many, how many people they have on staff?
They have a fairly small office staff that they work for, they have, I believe, four or five other engineers.
There's a lot of subcontract relationships, or specialized services, they're fully employed for one project, and they get supplied, right? They do.
Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those?
And, so that takes us to the qualifications. Um, agenda is seven through eleven, there were no additions to our amendments, and we're going to call the roll on that? Well, I guess, I guess we have a motion. To approve these.
Second.
Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Panterella?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Q?
Yes.
Mrs. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Simeon?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Ajaxak?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes. And there's some information on items, including our latest enrollment information, a suspension report, we heard the secret cabinet's XIB report, the CEB, and if you have any additional comments about agenda, I'll look at it one more time.
Okay, so I have a question about the, um, the people who are going to be, are contract managers, you said it's a small firm, so there's only about five people who work there, so...
That was the site engineer.
Okay.
Engineer. Yes, New Roads is a big firm, the construction manager, they have more time, so...
Right, okay, so is it, is it going to be set up, I know we're going to have, you know, committees through our buildings, but is there going to be one, like, mass general meeting first, so that we sort of get introduced to these people who, and when do you think that's going to happen?
Probably in, maybe January, February.
So will none of these managers or...
Yeah, we'll have staff managers that'll be on-site for the entire course of the project, so you'll have, you'll see the same map between the two projects.
We were impressed with their process, everybody's, they'll come in, do set up all the meetings, do building by buildings, and then set up a schedule so everybody knows when, where, why, how.
Okay, alright, that's good. And then on this agenda, it says number 11 will be distributed at the meeting, this exhibit, was it distributed, did I miss it?
Number 13.
Page 11.
Okay, so...
It has been approved on the board.
But didn't Don just vote to approve all, attend all employee items, player relations items?
He did.
Okay.
And it was discussed in executive session, once the contract's prepared, approved by the board, it'll be valid.
Okay, so you just voted on the contract that was going to be a public document that we don't have access to?
Not, I don't know, it's a little short, but when it's signed.
Okay, so this exhibit to be distributed at the meeting is not going to happen then?
Correct.
And the reason for that is?
It's not prepared yet.
Okay, so, let me, voted on something that's not prepared yet?
That's correct.
So you're voting on something that isn't...
We voted on the terms of a contract which will be prepared and approved by the board.
Will you say that again, Mark?
We voted on a, terms of a contract will be prepared and voted upon by the board the next meeting.
You vote on the terms of a contract that will be prepared?
That's correct.
So the board voted to approve a contract that is not yet prepared?
Much like with the construction manager and with the engineers, you vote on appointing them, and you go on the terms, and you prepare a contract, and that contract is ultimately approved by the board.
Well, that, that's a little different, because you have referendum monies that are set aside to pay those contracts, which...
Plus, this is any different.
Well, I beg to differ, Mark, because in my time, I have never been in a board meeting where there's been a contract that has not been prepared, but the board voted to approve it, so that's, are you going to sit there and tell me that's usual? That's the norm?
It's been done before, where you vote on the terms of the contract, you vote on the terms of the agreement, and the agreement's prepared, and approved by the board subsequently.
Can you think of a time that that has happened?
Happens all the time in student matters, happens in employee discipline matters, it happens...
Well, that's different than a monetary contract, that's not the same thing, Mark.
Oh, certainly is.
No, it's not.
Super tenors, mom and...
No, it's not, because contracts are available to the public, student agreements and staff discipline are not available to the public by law, that's different.
I'm sorry, I beg you, if we did, they are available, once approved by the board.
They cannot make student information available to the public, someone's monetary contract, just like my salary, is available to the public, just like every public employee salary is available, that's totally different.
The board's not going to argue with the meeting, it's telling us...
No arguing with me, I'm making my point that...
That's fine, I understand.
You are voting on a contract here which we don't have access to as the public, and that has not been done, to my knowledge, before, so to me, it begs the question of transparency, what is going on, why is this happening?
It happens in super tennis contracts all the time, they...
And if it does, I still don't agree with that, I don't care, doesn't matter, I can, but, but I can get a copy of that contract.
And you're going to have this contract?
I know, but, but that's not what this says, and that's not at a public meeting, which is totally different, which is the point of having a public meeting, so that the public is aware of what is going on, correct? So this is not something that, again, you don't have that many people here, but, trust me, this is not good business. This does not lend itself to transparency, to honesty, to what is actually going on here. So all these things that occur, that aren't forthright, indicate a lot, that you would sit here and say you're voting on something that you don't have the details of the contract for.
The board has, the board has the details, they voted upon the details, it's my job not to prepare the contract, but it's approved by the board.
So, then why aren't the details public, if they voted on it?
Because when they approve the contract, they will be public.
They just approved it.
They voted on, they voted on the details of the contract, the board will prepare, and the board will approve and then approve.
Well, if the details are prepared, then it should be distributed at this meeting, that's the point of this, we can go round and round with semantics, that's not, that's not what this says, and it's not good business, and this is exactly the point...
My answer's not going to change, Lisa.
Well, my, my response is not going to change either, we've never done this, and comparing it to students and personal discipline, that's not the same thing.
Super tennis contracts, yes.
Super tennis contract is public information, and I have a copy of it.
But, but the, the terms are approved before it's prepared, just like this one here.
Yeah, well, exactly, but it's done before he shows up to work, we have it before, yes, 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 and this is for a current employee, that's totally different.
Thank you. Have a question to adjourn?
Just want to say it's been a privilege to serve the Moorestown Board of Education for the past 10 years. Throughout these years, the district has remained focused on continuous improvement, 21st century learning, ensuring that our students are prepared for their next step. There's been significant fiscal challenges and funding cuts along the way, the district has shown its resilience and dedication to its mission in a changing environment. We've experienced, we, we now have an experienced superintendent and a cohesive administration who are focused on moving our district forward, and a dedicated team of teachers and staff who are committed to best meeting the needs of all children. In working together towards excellence, I believe our district will continue to be a leader. I'm honored to have had the opportunity to serve the children and the families.
Well, this was dead. Well, I have nothing prepared, but obviously it's, it's been a great experience for three and a half years, by the way, got an extra half a year out of the deal somehow, but I think everything that goes on the board, there's a lot of things, obviously, that go on outside of this meeting, these are not my, this is not the best part of the job in my perspective, the best part of the job is working in committees, getting some of the real work done, obviously digging deeper into things, you're able to, you know, have discussions, I think, with the differences of opinion that you see on any board, I think are extremely healthy, and it's always great to have a different perspective, a different point of view. I think everybody in the audience today needs to understand that, you know, everybody who's on this board, including the people who are here, when I started three and a half years ago, are extremely committed to the district, and everybody makes the decision that they think is in the best interest of the district, the students, the teachers, everybody, and it's hard for you to do, but I think that this group here, as well as the people who are in the board, do an extremely good job of it, so I've been privileged to serve all the board, I think the administration does a great job with some of the same types of constraints and difficulties that they have to deal with, and I think we have a great team in place, technology and curriculum and all the other areas of the district, we're all in great hands, I know that there's three new people coming in, which means three new perspectives, and as I said, I think that's extremely healthy, so I thank everybody on the board and the administration for moving me this opportunity.
You can, I'm going to say one last thing, before you give back the last working microphone. Time for new members, I just want to thank Chris Lee for serving, and Don, I really want to say thank you, I'm going to be late here, but thank you for starting when I graduated from high school, so, and in honor of you, Don, we do have a cake to share with the public for anybody who's here who wants a slice of cake, just a little sweetness in the end, so, thank you.
Thank you. So it's been my pleasure to serve the community, it's been rewarding, it's been challenging, it's been frustrating, but it's always been a great privilege mine to have been able to serve in this capacity, and I will miss it a lot, or I'll miss most of it a lot, and I wish you well, thank you very much. Could be a jerk?
No.
Wasn't you a jerk?
So was I.